Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda and get started?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And the very first item is always a great, great thing. Chief Steiner, would you like to come up and introduce our couple promotional promotions here?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to announce a couple of recent promotions at the Coon Rapids Police Department. They've taken place over the last month and a half or so. The promotion of Dan Duratt to Sergeant and the promotion of Adam Jacobson to Deputy Chief. I'll start with Dan Duratt. And Dan Duratt grew up in Champlin and Maple Grove, graduated from Champlin Park High School in 2009. He earned an Associate's Degree in Law Enforcement from North Hennepin Community College in 2014, and he's worked a variety of jobs in the field, including a CSO for the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, a AMRTC, or the Regional Hospital Security for the city of Anoka, and he was a Water Patrol Deputy in Isani County for a summer. Dan was hired here as a patrol officer at the Coon Rapids Police Department November 23rd of 2015, and has served in a variety of capacities, including as a detective, a field training officer, a below 100 instructor, and a range officer. Dan was officially promoted to the rank of Sergeant October 30th of this year. And I don't have all these things memorized when I do this, so I have to go back through people's background investigations and look for some interesting things to share with you guys about them. But part of that background investigation for all officers is they write a short biography, and we do it to see how they write and also to learn a little bit more about them and what they want to share. And there were a couple of things that really jumped out when I read Dan's, some I knew and some I didn't know. But what always amazes me, and you guys have seen enough of these presentations now, that you see service kind of running in the family a lot of times, and that's true in the Duratt family. Dan's father, Steve, was a retired Maple Grove Police Officer for over 30 years. And some of you may have been on the council when Dan was hired here, but his dad actually pinned his badge on. He's here tonight. What I didn't know is Dan has a twin brother that also had a call for service, and did some time in the U.S. Army, and now is currently a detention deputy with the Hennepin County. So it always kind of amazes me when we see that continual repeating pattern of service in families, and it's nice to see. Tonight, Dan's wife Jamie is here, and she'll be pinning his Sergeant's Badge on him tonight. But next, we're going to go, before we have her come up, we're, I'll announce the promotion also of Deputy Chief Adam Jacobson. And Adam grew up in Eagan, Minnesota, and graduated from Eagan High School in 2002. He then attended Metro State University and graduated with a Bachelor's Degree in Law Enforcement. Then he earned his Master's in Police and Public Safety Leadership from St. Thomas in 2014. Adam's law enforcement experience started with the Bloomington Police Department in 2003 as a CSO, and luckily for us, they didn't have a job for him at the time. And my, how the times have changed, everybody's got jobs now. But he was hired as a full-time police officer here in Coon Rapids December 12th of 2005, and he quickly made a name for himself as a high performer and extreme hard worker. I say this just to embarrass him, but he earned the nickname Rock Star, and it stuck. And he hates it when I say that, so that's why I did it. Adam has literally had his hands in everything from police explorers as an advisor to eventually coordinating the Coon Rapids Police Department Explorer Program. He's been a training officer, a DWI enforcement officer, a detective in our General Investigations Unit, had a short stop at Northdale Middle School as a fill-in liaison there. He was a patrol sergeant. He captained our Professional Standards Division, and even spent a few months captaining the Investigations Division, and was most recently promoted now to Deputy Chief on November 13th of this year. So I've been at the Coon Rapids Police Department for about 27 years coming up here, and I've worked with a lot of great officers that are dedicated and knowledgeable, passionate, and hardworking. So this takes nothing away from them, but I will say that, and I say it confidently, that Adam Jacobson is amongst the most knowledgeable, dedicated, and hardworking cops that I've ever been around, and I'm extremely proud to have him serving as a Deputy Chief. So congratulations, Adam, and congratulations, Dan. Following Sergeant Duratt's pinning, Adam's fiancee, John, will be pinning on his Deputy Chief Badge. So first, I'd like to ask Dan to step forward, Dan Duratt and Jamie, and I want to give you the right badge.
And we'll have the mayor come forward and administer the oath of office. This is so great, because as the chief mentioned, some of us were here when you were sworn in. In fact, I was the one fortunate enough to swear you in. Let me get that done. I thought, what is that thing? And so now, tonight, I see we've added a wife and children, so that's awesome. So this is kind of a special thing for me, because not only did I get to swear you in, my ride-along was with you, and so this is awesome. It's great. Raise your right hand, please.
I, Daniel Duratt.
I, Daniel Duratt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police sergeant.
The duties of a police sergeant.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations.
Adam Jacobson come out?
All right.
I don't have any other anecdotes, although I have enjoyed working with you.
I, Adam Jacobson, do solemnly swear.
I, Adam Jacobson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a Deputy Chief of Police.
The duties of a Deputy Chief of Police.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations, Deputy Chief.
Hang on. My pen closed. There you go.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out to support Dan and Adam tonight. As always, you are welcome to stay for the city council meeting, or you can follow them out and for congratulations and photos. Your choice. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate it.
Bye now. Doesn't she look like a pineapple? That's what she told me. I look like a pineapple.
It's beautiful.
All right. I'm sure the rest of this will be just as much fun. All right. Next is to approve the minutes of the December 5th, 2023 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second. Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. We have six items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one, which is item three on our agenda tonight, is to approve the 2024 SCORE Recycling and Non-Resident Use Agreements with Anoka County. Let's see. Attached for council consideration is the 2024 SCORE Recycling Agreement and the 2024 Non-Residential Use Agreement between Coon Rapids and Anoka County, which fund the city's residential solid waste recycling program. The term of these agreements is January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, and the funds within these agreements are used to meet the 2024 recycling goal of 6,744 tons, as set by Anoka County. Coon Rapids is entitled to receive reimbursement for eligible activities up to $283,831, and this amount includes nearly $200,000 total population and household allotment for the recycling program, $20,000 dedicated to facility improvements, and $65,000 for non-residential use. The 2024 recycling budget will be approved by the city and county before year's end, and the SCORE funds will be available to Coon Rapids on January 1st, 2024. Anoka County is currently working to establish a long-term program that would track Coon Rapids recycling facility usage by non-Coon Rapids residents, because there are a lot of them. Once determined, additional funding may be available to the city on an annual basis to assist in covering non-resident usage and expenses. So the first item, then, is to approve the 2024 SCORE Grant and the 2024 Non-Resident Use Agreement from Anoka County, and authorize staff to execute the agreement for the residential recycling program. The next item on our agenda is item four, which is the second on our consent agenda. We're looking to adopt Resolution 23-127, calling for a public hearing on a vacation of water main easement 10541 Woodcrest Drive. And on May 18th, TCA Real Estate, I'm sorry, May 18th, 2017, TCA Real Estate LLC received a site plan approval for the construction of an 80,500-square-foot two-story building to replace the existing, all right, this is a Coon Rapids Chrysler Dodge, we'll just have to make a change in the legal description, so we're doing a vacation, but because we're doing a vacation, we have to do a public hearing, and the petition will require a four-fifth majority. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-127, which calls for a public hearing on this vacation on January 16th, 2024, for vacation on a water main easement for 10541 Woodcrest Drive Northwest. And the next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 23-129, committing specific revenue sources and fund balance for the Boulevard Tree Maintenance Fund. The city implemented, yeah, Government Standards Accounting Board. Why is Government Standards Accounting Board, I would think G S A B, but the acronym is G A S B? Anybody got an answer for that? All right, no problem. The city implemented G A S B Standard 54 Fund Balance and Reporting and Governmental Fund Type Definitions in 2011. Implementation of the standard required formalizing the commitment of the specific revenue sources to specified purposes for all the city's existing special revenue funds, and required new fund balance classifications for financial reporting. The city has since established the Boulevard Tree Maintenance Fund in 2018 to account for the removal and maintenance of infested Boulevard ash trees, and despite the intent of the city to commit the fund balance in this fund, council action is required to formalize the commitments. We're looking to adopt Resolution Number 23-129, committing specific revenue sources and fund balance in the Boulevard Tree Maintenance Fund. Did I get that right? G A S B?
I believe it's actually Government Accounting Standards Board.
So there was just two words and flipped, and, oh, original sentence.
So it should be Government Accounting Standards Board.
Correct.
Got it. Because I always look for what it means, and I'm going, okay, I don't get it.
You had it right.
Five. The fourth item on our consent agenda, which is item six on our evening's agenda, is to approve the updated Recycling Center Staffing Agreement with Atlas Staffing. And the Coon Rapids Recycling Center contract staffing for its daily needs at the facility, and an annual contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated was approved by the city council on November 7th, 2023, but was not executed by Atlas as the New Minnesota Earned Sick and Safe Time, or E S S T, law was not accounted for in the agreement. So the attached amended contract was updated to include this requirement. So we're looking to approve the updated contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated for contracted staffing at the recycling center. Item seven on this evening's agenda, which is the fifth on our consent, is to adopt Resolution 23-135, authorizing the sale and deferral of sale of tax forfeit properties. And if you're curious, the list, do I need to read the pins or anything for this, or just, it's all in the motion, right? But there are one, two, three properties. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-135, authorizing the sale of and requesting the deferral of sale of tax forfeited property. We're authorizing the sale of one little sliver of land over an olive street that's just going to be basically given to the property owner or whatever, however the exchange will be. And then there are two properties over off of 10 that we're going to, we're deferring decision on that until later. So that's what this one does. Item eight, and it's item six, it's the sixth item on our consent agenda, but it's item eight this evening, is to adopt Resolution 23-128, accepting the donation to the police department. The Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association made a donation of $452.90 toward the purchase of a wall monitor for the police department. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-128, accepting a donation to the police department. And that is our consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Is there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are up to item nine on our new business. Consider Resolution 23-132, accepting business sponsorships and donations for 2023. And we have a pretty good list of folks that stepped up and supported our various things this year for various events and programs that received support throughout the year. The city of Coon Rapids accepts sponsorships and donations for various events and activities as part of the business sponsorship program and as part of general donations to the city. For the 2023 year, several donations were received from area businesses that helped support and defray costs of various events and activities, or in some cases, new donations or sponsorship dollars received were put towards creating new features for various events and programming. So we would like to thank all of the businesses and donors that supported events and programs in 2023, and I think they are worth reading through. Elphi Home Care supported the farmer's market. Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation supported Movie in the Park. Moms on the Run and Charitable Minnesota supported Rec on the Spot. Night Tia Night was sponsored by the Coon Rapids Crime Prevention Association, Alloy Brewing, Coon Rapids Fire Community Fund, Coon Rapids Police Association, North Star Towing, Costco, Vending Minnesota, Dick's Sporting Goods, Texas Roadhouse, Raising Canes, Excel Energy, Canexus Energy, Shanticleer Pizza, and Rebel Sports. And our very popular Coon Rapids Love My Pet Fair was sponsored by the Community Strength Foundation, Grand Slam, Stone Mountain Pet Lodge, Nothing Bunt Cakes, Jimmy John's, Coon Rapids, Home Depot, Broadway Pizza, Cub Foods, Chuck and Don's, and Nutrisource Pet Foods. So we're looking, oh, all right, so we're not in the consent anymore. Stop talking now. Councilmember Geisler.
There is also the Coon Rapids Senior Center that received donations. There were some anonymous donations, and the Super Senior Club Volunteer Party, Friends of Fridley, M N D O R, Tuesday AA, Bob and Linda Frederickson, another anonymous donation, and AA Back to Basics, all supported the senior center.
Thank you. I'm not sure I would skip right over that. It was the first one.
Yeah, it was the first one. If we're reading them, let's get them all.
Yep, glad, thank you.
So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Resolution 23-132 to accept the contributions made to the 2023 sponsorship and donations program.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Ray Rower. Is there a discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 10 is to consider a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for intersection improvements at County Road 132, 85th Avenue and Evergreen Boulevard, Project 21-28. Mr. Hanson, was this the one you had something for us on? Or, oh, Woodcrest, you have something for us on, right?
Well, no, Mr. Mayor and Council, I can certainly speak to this one. This item is a joint powers agreement between the city of Coon Rapids and Anoka County. It's for the construction and maintenance of intersection improvements at County Road 132, or otherwise known as 85th Avenue and Evergreen Boulevard. So over about the last year, year and a half, city staff have been working with Anoka County to develop final plans for intersection improvements, and that includes a roundabout, sidewalk connections, ADA improvements, as well as replacement of the city water main from the BNSF tracks all the way over to the Westerly Target entrance off of 85th. We've had a number of problems with the water main in this area of the city, and this project proposes to replace it.
I have to believe that's not great soil, though, now.
It is not. Construction is planned to take place starting in the summer of 2024 and then end in October of 2024. The joint powers agreement addresses items pertaining to the maintenance of the two roadways, including the sidewalk. The city will be responsible for plowing the sidewalk extension that will occur on Evergreen. It also talks about the cost delineation and responsibilities. So the city will be responsible for paying for the water main improvements, the streetlight power, as well as its share of the road and the drainage improvements.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Mr. Hanson, the roundabout that's going to be put in, will that be by the railroad side of that one, or will it be next to the Target entrance?
So the roundabout is actually at Evergreen Boulevard, right across from where the driveway is to Springbrook Nature Center.
Oh, okay.
So it's west of where Target is. It's between where Target is and the railroad tracks.
As a proponent of roundabouts, I like that idea.
And it's going to be a big one with lots of room for all of those trucks to make it around, right?
Exactly. We've made special attention to designing for the trucks.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement with Anoka County for the intersection improvements at County Road 132, 85th Avenue and Evergreen Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 11 is to consider a joint powers agreement with the city of Fridley for lighting, landscape, water service improvements at County Road 132 and Evergreen Boulevard. So this is kind of the rest of it, then.
Yep. So I got this one as well. So again, it's a joint powers agreement, but this time between Coon Rapids and Fridley. It's for the same project we just talked about. It addresses the street lighting components, the landscaping within the roundabout area, as well as some water service improvements for Springbrook Nature Center. So if you don't know, Springbrook Nature Center actually gets its sewer and water service from the city of Coon Rapids. The JPA addresses how the street lighting will work. So the city of Coon Rapids will be responsible for contracting with Excel Energy to install the streetlights. The cost will actually be split between Anoka County, Coon Rapids, and Fridley, and Excel is going to own and maintain those roundabout lights for a period of 25 years, and then after 25 years, it becomes the property of Coon Rapids, but the costs for replacing those lights are going to be split between Fridley and Coon Rapids. So that's what the agreement talks about there. Fridley, in turn, for the city of Coon Rapids, paying the ongoing power for all of the streetlights at the intersection, Fridley has agreed to do the landscaping within the roundabout area. So landscaping is not going to require any irrigation. It's going to be very similar to what we did on Coon Rapids Boulevard over by the lily putt, coral forester grasses, daylilies, things that are going to be very salt resistant, don't require very much maintenance. So Fridley is going to take care of that, and they're going to make sure it's looking good in perpetuity. And then the last thing is a portion of that water service under the reconstructed road of 85th is going to get replaced. That serves Fridley, and they're going to pay us back. We're going to include that with the construction and the costs that we pay to Anoka County for the water main, but Fridley is going to pay for that section of the service line that gets replaced under 85th. So this agreement just defines the terms of how that's going to work.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Hanson, on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement with the city of Fridley for street lighting, landscape, and water service improvements associated with roundabout construction at County Road 132 and Evergreen Boulevard.
Second.
You both stopped. Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Geisler. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider a feasibility report and order a public hearing and assessment hearing for Street Reconstruction Project 24-1. Mr. Hanson, you do have something on this one, don't you?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I have a short presentation. So I'm here to talk about our 2024 Street Reconstruction Project. A little bit of background, we talked about this last May, but the way that we come up with the streets that we choose, or we propose, rather, to reconstruct is we rate all of the streets. We go around and actually physically review them. The last time we did it was in 2021. We're going to do it again this coming spring, but still using those ratings and acknowledging that these streets are all over 30 years old, the ones that we're proposing to reconstruct. We also talk to our maintenance staff and find out where they're spending the most time patching potholes, and that's how we come up with what we're proposing to reconstruct. The first area for next year's project is in the Woodcrest neighborhood. This is bounded by Quince Street on the west, over to Kumquat Street on the east, and then north of 99th Avenue up to and including 101st Avenue. These streets were actually reconstructed in 1994, but we did not replace the water main. At that time, we actually didn't assess for street reconstruction projects. But this project now proposes to completely reconstruct the streets, including replacement of all of the cast iron pipe water mains that are within this neighborhood. It also includes adding a sidewalk on the north side of 99th Avenue, where we do not have one today, between Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension and Woodcrest Drive. All of the streetlights in this neighborhood are owned by Canexus Energy, and they're already LED-style fixtures. The second group of streets is around the post office, and it includes 102nd Avenue, 102nd Lane, and then Goldenrod Street. Plan here is to replace the streets, replace all of the damaged curb and gutter, the driveway aprons, repair the storm and the sanitary manholes, upgrade the streetlight poles and the fixtures to match our current. match our current standards. There's only a couple on this street. And then extend the sidewalk where it ends on the south side of 102nd Avenue, all the way over to Foley. There's a short gap there. And then the last group of streets is Norway Street, 90th Avenue, a couple of, well, a cul-de-sac neighborhood that's just east of East River Road, south of Highway 610, and the same scope exists there. So proposing to resurface the road, replacing the damaged curb and gutter, driveway aprons, repairing the storm and the sanitary manholes, and then upgrading the streetlight poles to match our current standards. The scope for the schedule for the project is to have our second open house. We had one in October, but the second one is going to be scheduled for January 24 of 2024. We're proposing to hold the public hearing on February 20, with assessment, adoption, and contract awards taking place in April and May of next year, and then having construction start in the spring, May of 2024. We will send letters which contain all of the construction schedule, contact, frequently asked questions, information that residents and property owners are going to have prior to any work beginning. We're also going to have a meeting, an open house style meeting, within a neighborhood park there with the contractor that we get on the project there to be able to answer questions about how the sequence of the work is going to take place and the schedule. We post weekly updates every Friday on our website. People can sign up on there. There's a notify me button on our website that allows people to be able to get those each week. And then we also have an option where people can sign up for text messages for the random emergencies that are inevitably going to happen if we have to shut off water, unfortunately, in a very short timeframe, things like that nature. That's what we would plan to use that for. So people can sign up for that as well. Estimated project costs, total 6.8 million, assessments, 550,000, and then the costs are spread over a number of different city funds. The 2024 assessment rates are $2,377 for a single-family home. That was 2,365 in 2023, so not much of a difference from this year to next, which is good. And then multifamily assessments, $31 per front foot, commercial properties, $60 a foot, and then industrial properties, $75 a front foot. And then the public, or property owners, have multiple different ways to pay their assessments. The first option is that they can pay the assessment after the council adopts it, which we would propose to be on May 7 of 2024. So between May 8, the next day, and then 30 days to June 8, they can pay it off with no interest at all. The second option is after June 8, there's some amount of interest that's going to be accruing. I think it's about 4.95% in that ballpark. So they would have to reach out to the city to find out what that current amount owed is, and then they can pay it off. If a property owner doesn't want to do anything, they can just let the assessment roll over to their property taxes and start paying it in 2025. So if somebody were to do that with the proposed assessment rate, the cost amortized over a 10-year period, they would have 10 years to be able to pay it off, would be $317 additional on their property taxes each year. So we do have a couple of different videos that property owners can watch that talk about the sequencing of the construction, and then also the frequently asked questions that many people will have about how mail works, garbage collection, all of those things. So with that, I would be glad to take any questions, and then staff would just recommend that the council adopt the resolutions that are identified on the agenda.
$317 a year, interest?
No, that's the assessment amount, not interest.
Thank you.[883.44][883.44](laughter)
No.
How do we get that for less than 5% interest?
No. So, to be clear, $317 per year for 10 years.
Which includes the interest.
Which includes the interest and the assessment.
I was just, I was getting my calculator.[901.32][901.32](laughter) Any questions for Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't think the question is for Mr. Hanson. I think it's a good project. The roads, obviously, are in bad shape, and we're going to get them done. We're going to do the water mains. All that's been talked about for a number of years, and it's a good project for us to do. I did have a question. It actually came up with our last one. On the interest on, if you wanted to pay your assessment full, you have until June 8 with no interest. Then, between June 8 and November, whatever was, middle of November, there is some interest. But I'm wondering, why would we charge any interest before the project is complete? Do we pay the contractors ahead of time? Is there some outlay of cash that that interest would need to be accounted for?
So, the first payment to a contractor, so the work would be scheduled to start on the first Monday of the month of May. So the first payment would happen at some point in the early part of June, because we do monthly payments.
Okay, and that would be the reason for that little sliver of interest?
Yeah, but I think there's also some state law requirements about how some of these assessments are paid, and I might need to ask for some help from either Ashley or Matt on how that works, but I know it's something we've talked about in the past. It's part of our policy.
Okay. And I know those folks can reach out to you or staff if they have that same question not answered by me.
All right.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Just a quick question. Some of my constituents have contacted me, asking, why is Coon Rapids having to replace all of their water mains all of a sudden? And I'm telling them that cast iron is bad. Then they ask, okay, well, I'm a little unclear on this whole good/bad thing. Could you give us just a 20, 30-second explanation as to why those cast iron pipes are needing to be replaced? And that's less for me, but more for them.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. That, over time, cast iron, like ductile iron, like all water main pipes, just degrade. They start to pit on the inside and the outside of the pipes. And cast iron also behaves a little bit differently than some of the pipe types like ductile iron, in that it has a tendency to just shear all at once catastrophically in the ground. So the shear strength isn't very, very high. It's very brittle. So we've had a lot of issues with the water mains and the cast iron pipes. And when we reconstruct these roads, we have an opportunity to rebuild these for 30, 35 years. So we want that water main to stay good. We want to be confident that that water main is going to be good for that entire period of time. So cast iron pipe is really what we look for, but we also replace water mains where we have ductile iron pipes. For example, on 85th Avenue, that's a ductile iron pipe, but the soils are bad, they're corrosive, the groundwater table is very high. So all of that contributes to the longevity of the pipe material. So we look at where we have breaks, where we have a history of breaks, where we have cast iron, and we just want to make those improvements now so that we're not dealing with them all at once years and years from now.
And what are you replacing them with?
This will be PVC material.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, because there's nothing worse than getting a road done and then having the water main break right away.[1122.14][1122.14](laughter)
And that still happens. That does happen.
That's kind of where my break was going.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Geisler?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-1/4, accepting the feasibility report and ordering a public hearing for February 20, 2024, and adopt a motion to adopt Resolution 24-1/10, declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of a proposed assessment role, and a motion to adopt Resolution 24-1/11, setting an assessment hearing date for February 20, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 13 is to consider Resolution 24-8/8, accepting plans and specifications for the 2024 well rehabilitation and authorizing solicitation of bids. I just imagined you were still there.[1191.65][1191.65](laughter) Mr. Hanson, you want to hit the highlights of this one?
Yeah, I can walk you through kind of the high points of this one. So this item is to accept the plans and specs for our 2024 well rehabilitation project. It's work that we have budgeted for in the 2024 budget. The project itself is going to focus on rehabilitation of wells 10, 24, and 25, as well as the west treatment plant booster pump number one, and then the backwash pump that's at the east water treatment plant. Our goal is to get this project bid early in 2024 so that we can start the work, in particular on wells 24 and 25, so that that work is done before we get into the peak demand season of the summer. And then the rest of the work included with the project will follow after that, but then be complete in November.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Hanson, on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I would presume, is this like other years where we budget for like the worst-case scenario, and then we look at that, and we only do the work that's necessary?
That's exactly right. Yep.
Correct. Way to go. Okay. And then is it our team that says what needs to be done, or is it the contractor telling us?
Well, we work with a consultant engineer. It's our team as well, and then it's also the contractor.
Okay. So a team, including the city?
Yes. We're certainly involved in how those decisions are made.
I like how Mr. Hanson looked at Mr. Hammer, hoping to get a nod on him, but he just ignored him.[1293.15][1293.15](laughter) You're on your own.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-8/8, accepting plans and specifications for 2024 well rehabilitation and authorize the solicitation of bids.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Griscoviac. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 14 on this evening's agenda is to consider Resolutions 23-130 and 23-131, approving the year-end budget appropriations and amendments. Ms. Hanson, highlights?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So for your consideration this evening is two items. First is to reallocate appropriations within the general fund. So following our most recent year-end estimate, we are recommending net adjustments equal to zero. Those are outlined in the attached memo. We are also asking council to approve carryforwards from 23 to 24. These are for items that are not expected to be received or services performed by the end of the year. And so those amounts total 177,850 in the general fund and 1.1238,861 in other various funds. Those are also summarized in the resolutions that are attached. The second item for your consideration is to approve an amendment to the housing programs fund budget. So back in May, the city had authorized an addendum service agreement with our program administrator, and which included additional funding of 1.2 million. We have seen a significant increase in the grants and loans running through those programs just based on the current interest rate market. Ours are much lower than the outside market. So as such, we're asking for the amendment to align the budget with the funding that was authorized earlier in the year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Of the excess in the general fund, how much is considered to go into the facilities construction fund?
Councilmember Griscoviac, so our current estimate puts our unassigned fund balance at 19,720,000. It's about just under 700,000 more than the mid-year estimate, which is included in the 24 budget. So our next year's budget is based off that mid-year estimate. So that's kind of our baseline. So as of this point, it's a little less than 700,000 would be, we're anticipating to be available at the end of the year.
Mayor, Council, if I may, at this point, we are not sort of designating where those excess funds would go. That will come next year, in the first quarter, probably February, March, we come back with the final numbers for 2023, at which point we know what that excess above fund balance is. And at that point, we have traditionally put that into facilities construction fund, or we could consider other options, perhaps park fund or something along those lines. But that decision will be in a couple of months.
Okay, I think.
You're thinking fire truck, aren't you?
I think Matt and the council know where I'm going.[1518.42][1518.42](laughter) I'd like to see us designate $450,000 of this excess somehow to pay for that, second night for that fire truck. So just again, throwing that out there in front of the council.
And Mayor, Council, we do anticipate, I believe, in February, coming back to you with a conversation around capital planning, and so we could discuss that at that time prior to that decision being made.
Yeah, I saw that there's a work session on our calendar already for early next year that we're talking about that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Oh, let's talk about it right now.[1546.21][1546.21](laughter)
Let's just get it done. Should I make a motion to get that done?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23-130, reallocating funds within the 2023 general fund budget and amending the 2023 and 2024 budgets, and motion to approve Resolution 23-131, amending the housing program fund budget.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 15 is to consider the 2024 workers' compensation coverage. Ms. Hanson, you again.
Yes. Yes, our workers' comp renewal came in more favorable than we anticipated. So overall, our renewal calls for a 4.5% increase in our overall net premium. We saw 11% decrease in the actual premium itself, but then our experience modification factor went up to 1.0 from 0.85. So that kind of puts us right on average. And then our options, as far as we have different options that we can utilize for payment, so there's the regular premium option, though historically the city has chosen one of the retro-rated plans, which is what we're recommending this evening. So we're recommending option one, which so provides for potential savings of 830,000 versus additional costs of 446. We've experienced pretty positive results for this program. So, you know, the last six years, we've saved over 1.5 million utilizing the retro plan. So that's our recommendation this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. So it went up, but it didn't go up as much as we thought it was going to go up.
Correct.
All right. Anybody have any questions on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to approve option one of the retro-rated plans for the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Ray Rower. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 16 is to consider the 2024 police officer labor agreement and adopt Resolution 23-134, approving the labor agreement. Ms. Roth?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We ask you approve Resolution 23-134. Through the negotiation process, the city and the union, LELS, came to an agreement looking at market data, limited market recruitment retention. We came to the agreement of a wage increase for both 2024 and 2025 of a COLAF of 3.5%. In 2024, a market adjustment to step one of that pay band of 3.5% to help us move in line more with what the market was presenting for those entry-level positions. 1.5% in 2024 market adjustment for the remainder of those steps, steps two through, two through.
One through.
Thank you.
One through three.
Yeah. And then 2025, a market adjustment in addition to the 3.5% COLA of 1.75%. Other items negotiated are listed on the memo. Can I answer any questions for the council?
What does CBA stand for?
Collective Bargaining Agreement. Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's so many acronyms, so I always look for where they're spelled out and I don't see that one spelled out, so. All right, any questions on this one?
Ms. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 23-134, approving the labor agreement and all MOUs between the city and law enforcement labor services, Local 207.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Griscoviac?
I'd like to just maybe say a few words. First, I appreciate the hard work by the human resources manager. Thank you for that and the city manager and also for the representatives from the unions in getting this, negotiating in good faith and getting this done for us. Obviously, a big part of our community, the police, a big part of our budget. Wanted to just maybe make a comment about the, the COLA adjustment, 3.5, another 3.5% market adjustment in 2024. Now, I totally agree with that, but I also wanted to maybe, you know, talk about negotiations, you know, when we have to negotiate again in 2025 and 2026 because there's one thing that I've, that I've realized here in Coon Rapids. This is a great community for police officers. We, we've said it here, you know, we have great community support for the police. We have excellent support from county staff. You know, we have a safe community and, and all that. So we're not, you know, we're seeing officers wanting to come to Coon Rapids. We're not losing officers. So there's a lot more than just COLA adjustment and step adjustments that are attractive for police officers coming here. And I think that says a lot about the culture of the city, a lot about the culture of the police force, a lot about the culture of the city council. So when we look at these negotiations, I think that we should take all that into consideration, that this is a great place to work. Me myself, I don't get up in the morning and say, oh, I'm going to go to work today because I got a 1.5% COLA adjustment. You know, I, I go to work in the morning because I like what I'm doing. I like the community and the people that I'm serving. And I think all that is part of the calculation when people come into this community to serve in our police department. So just wanted to throw that out there, food for thought, something I've been thinking about.
Ms. Mayor? Councilmember Carlson?
To add to Councilmember Griscoviac's point, when you look at how many officers come here from other agencies, it tells you something. They're doing a great job.
Right. But unless, unless there be any interpretation, we're not planning on cutting their pay.
Right, right. Mr. Ray, I'd make one quick comment before. One other thing that I'd like to say, you know, to Ms. Roth and, and staff, that it's great to see that we're approving this before the contract actually starts. There's so many times where, you know, our negotiations, and I know we've got, still have more to come, that will be in the early part of the year, but, you know, I think the, the trust and the diligence to do the negotiations is great, that, you know, we can have this in place before it starts so we don't have to worry about retro pay, you know, and, and that's, that's a great thing, so.
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, I, I agree. I think we've got a great police department and police force. I think one of the things that we really wanted to focus on in this agreement was ensuring that the sort of starting pay piece wasn't a deterrent for anyone. And while I agree that we are getting some good candidates, the, the competition for police officers is pretty stiff right now. You know, when I started with the city 12 years ago, we'd get 150 to 200 people who would apply for one or two positions. And now, you know, we'll see, we'll have three or four openings and we'll get 10, something like that. And so that's sort of the market we were, were in. And even within Anoka County, sort of the competition, look at the City of Blaine, the sheriff's office, sort of where their starting pay is, we decided to be a little more aggressive about that in, in the opening year. And to be clear, that additional 3.5% is only to that starting wage. The years one, two, and three after that, it's that smaller market adjustment. So it's not, that three, extra 3.5% doesn't apply to all police officers. It's just that, the entry level, because we saw sort of a deficiency there compared to some of our peers that we wanted to start to address a little more. Then with the overall market within the police officer realm, there has been a lot of upward pressure on wages these last three or four years. And so the general market increase above the cost of living increase is helping address that.
Your Honor? Councilmember Novak?
Just wanted to make a brief comment. At the very beginning of the year, the council made it a priority to try and bring the police department in Coon Rapids up to as close to full strength as possible. And I just want to compliment staff on getting a contract in place that will allow the police department to do that. We've already heard that there's a lot of competition out there right now for police officers and we've seen that a lot of the officers that we brought in have been lateral transfers from other cities. People want to come and work here as cops. And so I think that really reflects highly on what our staff has done here. And I just want to offer my congratulations on that. So thank you.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I just want to ditto what council member Geisler and council member Novak here said. I agree. I am happy to see this come out early. I am glad that we have settled what looks like a fair contract. Recruitment and retention right now is of the highest priority. We are in a, a labor shortage and not just that, but salaries overall with the difficulty of the job. We've seen an increase in PTSD claims. These are folks doing a really hard job that we want to have, have a decent salary, decent benefits. And so glad to see this and, and hope it continues. Thank you.
Are we still continuing to market it the way Chief Wise used to do it? Now Sheriff Wise, of course, but when Chief Wise was here, Coon Rapids is cop heaven. That's what he used to say.
That'll bring him here.
That'll bring him here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to...
We've actually got a motion in a second.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I think, I think you made the motion.
I forgot. I'll make it again.
We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution 23-134, approving the labor agreement and all MOUs between the city and law enforcement labor services, Local 207. Carlson made it. I remember him saying it. I remember his voice, yeah.
There we go.
All right, so any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 17 is to consider resolution 23-133, approving a 2024 compensation plan for up, for up, for unrepresented employees. Ms. Roth?
Thank you again. We ask that council approve the 2024 COLA increase for unrepresented folks at 3.5% to be effective January 1st, 2024. Other items, do you have any questions I can answer?
All right. Any questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll do this one.
Councilmember Geisler?
So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 22-124, establishing the 2024 compensation plan for unrepresented employees.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As the mayor in Alabama said yesterday at a meeting, the ayes have it and the noes know it. I like that. All right, we are up to the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting, and they all left us. So I'm going to assume there is nobody here for open mic unless somebody from staff is going to jump up. I don't have any reports on previous open mics and we are up to other business. And having just made the drive around town, I would encourage everybody to get out and look at those, the, the lights while they're up. They've, everything is on the city's website. It'll put all the addresses out there and you can put in and you can mark out who the winners were in motion and the winners and still. And it was just a lot of fun, braving around, looking at the lights. There's no snow to reflect it like normal years, but at least it wasn't raining when we went out. Other business.
Mr. Mayor, I think the one thing to make sure everybody is aware of, city offices will be closed next week on Monday, December 25th, and then the following week on January 1st. So those two would be holiday days and the city offices will be closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
As people may be aware, there was a terrible accident between a pedestrian and a vehicle over by, pardon me, by a cheapskate on Coon Rapids Boulevard. And I just want to remind everybody who is out there, the days are very short, it gets dark very quickly. Please wear light clothing, please wear something reflective. It is very difficult to see pedestrians in the wintertime because you are bundled up, your head is covered, your face is covered. Please take that extra step to make sure that anyone can see you. It can save your life.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
Yeah, I would just add on to that, that as the pedestrian, if it were me, I would want to make sure that I am extra safe because folks, even though they're not supposed to be an illegal, might be looking at their phone and not see you. In addition, I would add, you should want to walk on the left side of the street. That is the law. You're walking against the traffic so you can see them coming towards you so that if they were over too far, hopefully you can get out of the way. Whereas when you're walking with your back to them, you're not going to see them coming. So make sure you're walking on the left side of the road. Bikes are on the right side. And other than that, since this is our last public meeting before the holiday season, just peace and safety for everyone this holiday season, whatever you celebrate. I just wish you peace and safety. Thank you.
Okay. Other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Maybe just to tag on that, I mean, 2022 year, it's our last meeting of the year. I think overall, the council, the staff, everyone did a pretty good job with what was thrown in front of us and we're living in a great community. With that, I would just like to, you know, say happy, Merry Christmas and happy holidays to staff, to the residents, to council, and see you here in the new year.
Actually, 2023 though, right?
2023.
Yeah.
Did I say 22?
Yeah. I mean, that was a good year.
They're both good years.
Just went high.
Mr. Stemwell, any, anything coming up that we should be announcing or?
Mayor, council, I was just even going to ask Chief Steiner to give a quick update where we're at with the Community Police Academy, that's starting on how many spots we maybe have available and the people can still sneak in.
Yeah. I, I do know there are spots available. I don't have the exact amount, but you can go to our website and you'll see the link for how to connect with Sergeant Gustafson, who's running the event this year. And then if I can pivot just quickly and say, we had Toys for Joy today and the police department and fire department went out and delivered a lot of food and gifts to people who were in need and we had a great time doing it and a lot of happy people out there, so. And happy holidays from the police department as well.
Excellent. I know our fire department just delivered a bunch of toys to Mercy Hospital. There was a donation from North Star Lions and the Coon Rapids Fire Department Community Fund. So that was an impressive number of toys. I think they got to meet the new president of the hospital when they went.
Oh.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion adjourned, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak. Merry Christmas, everyone, and we are adjourned.